Pledge of allegiance and move in silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Ansorgi.
Here.
Commissioner Rushton.
Present.
Chairman Bonick.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Sutis Little.
Here.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
Here.
Commissioner Lotner.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. So then that bring us to communications, proclamations, and presentations. The first one is Eurasian Mill Foil eradication update. We have Mr. Popper and Mr. Price.
I'll start out by thanking you for giving us the time we prepared a little presentation just so that everybody's on the same page. I understand you-
Could you just introduce yourself to record? No, you're right there.
Oh, yeah? We've had trouble with those mics.
Keep your name to the clerk has it as record officially.
Okay. So we-
You gotta state your name. Your name.
My name is Brian Price and I work as a lake biologist for Lake Lillinaw Lake Association, which is a part-time position.
I'm John Popper from the Lake Association.
So the Eurasian water mill foil situation, you've had a chance to look at this. We probably spend five, 10 minutes with this presentation real quickly and then you can ask any questions that you'd like. Eurasian water mill foil is new to Lake Lillinaw. We think it's probably been in the lake for either one or two years, but it's not new to the area. Other lakes, Long Lake, I was just in several different marinas. So it's in the marina in Lillin, it's in the marina in Sutton's Bay, it's in the marina at Harbor West. It's no surprise that it travels around. It usually gets moved around on boats. It can be fragments of it on the prop of a boat or on a trailer that's backed into the water. It's how it normally spreads. Not all invasive aquatic invasive species are a big problem. This one happens to be a big problem. The problem is illustrated in these pictures and I should say, these are not from Lake Lillinaw. This is not us, not yet. But it can form these dense, dense mats that are very thick, goes from the bottom of the lake to the surface that my prop this summer running through it in one part of Lake Lillinaw wasn't that bad, but yes, you pick it up on your prop like that. It'll close off navigation channels if it gets thick enough and yes, you do not want to swim in this stuff. It's a mess. Let's go to the next one, please, Chat. So there's a list of lakes nearby that have it. There is a fair amount of experience. I would say that not all of our experiences with trying to deal with this stuff have been very good. In fact, the story on it is that once you've got it, you've got it. It's not ever been eradicated completely from a lake where it exists, but it has been controlled. In other words, you can get it to a point where you've kind of knocked it back and it's at an acceptable level, but you have to keep working at it and keep containing it. And if you do contain it, then your annual expenses go down considerably. That other slide shows where it is. It's all in the south part of the lake right now. Kind of, most of it is in the midsection. The, I don't know exactly how it got in the lake. There's two boat launches on the west side and there's quite a, right in the middle, one at Honky Road on the DNR launch. Yeah, John, you have some-
Well, your pointer.
Oh, yeah. That's what that is. But nothing in the north lake yet. So let's go on. Okay. Let's run that drone footage if you would, Chat. I didn't know Chat was so, such a tech guy. So this was taken from a drone about 400 feet above the lake, July 21st. And it is a good way to scout for this stuff. You can actually see it. And it is right along next to the drop-off. You can see the drop-off really clearly. It's that dark patch and right there. And this is the thickest infestation of it on the lake. It stretches, it's kind of broken a little bit here and there, but it almost stretches for better part of a mile. It's right off the Maybert Creek natural area, so we also went to Bingham Township to get permission to remove it there. And that boat is anchored right in the edge of the stuff right there. All along. And because it's 712 feet and the drop-off goes down to oh, 25, 30 feet in that section of the lake, we presume that it's not out here. We're pretty sure it's not. Thank you. That kind of is a dramatic illustration of what it's all about. What we're doing about it. You can go on to the, the initial identification was, there's one patch of it right just south of the Narrows. You know, the fishing dock behind St. Mary's School. If you were to go due south of that, about a couple hundred yards, that's one of the really worrisome ones because boats go through there all the time and could pick it up. But there's also, we found 11 separate locations and we've mapped those and got the GPS coordinates. And we decided, at least at this stage, we believe that we can control it and we can roll it back without the use of chemicals. And we hope that we can do that. It's not inexpensive. What happens is that you use a barge and a diver actually pulls the roots up, but just feeds the plants into a big suction hose and they go up and are captured in mesh bags and then take them back to shore and they're composted. It seems like a very inefficient way to do this, but when you've got it, you've got it and you've nailed it. You have to come back the next year. About 5% seems to return, but if you spend $100,000 to get it in one year, then you're spending maybe $10,000 the next year. After that, you're just mopping up. You're looking for little bits of it here and there. And we expect to be doing that. So we've applied for permit from the state's former DGQ and we are waiting on that permit. And we don't know that we're going to be able to get it yet this fall. It takes quite a bit of time. And we would like to knock off those places like the one by the Lake Lillinaw Narrows. And then next year, we would go after the big infestation. We've been doing some private fundraising. We've raised about $40,000. There is a state program that provides funding for control of Eurasian water mill foil and other nuisance species, both on land and water. We will be applying to that. I would think that the support of the county commissioners probably isn't gonna, certainly can help us. I don't think it could possibly, the fact that we've come to you and your understanding of this problem and supporting us, that's one of the main reasons to come. We have support already from Bingham Township. The Conservancy owns a fair amount of the property where the mill foil was off and they of course are fully behind us. Questions of John or of myself?
Mr. Lotner.
Yes, thank you. You said it takes a person on a boat and they would pull these up by the roots. Is that somebody you would contract with or-
Yes.
Is it companies that do it or-
There are a couple lakes that actually, because they have a big enough problem, they have their own equipment and they hire their own divers and they run the program themselves. We looked into that and it would take time to come up to speed, to train people to do it. And there is at least one guy who comes from, I can't remember, over towards Alpena. Has a really good reputation, does a lot of work for the state already and is ready to go. We could actually have, if we had the permits, we'd have them out there right now. So, yeah, there are people that do this.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson.
I know this is a real common problem downstate. And some years ago, there was some research going on about some kind of bug that would eat these plants. Whatever, was that ever found to be a viable option?
Not really.
Not really?
It appears that-
It turned out to be the Emerald Ashbore.
From what? What did you say?
I said it turned out to be the Emerald Ashbore. I was just kidding.
One of the swimmers' ashes.
Swimmers' ashes.
It appears that the bug eats everything before it eats the mill foil. You know? So it seems to be less than effective. And from what we understand, chemicals can be very effective, but it tends to come back. You know, so it knocks it down. If you've got a huge amount of it, like the pictures in that first slide, that would probably be a case where you would use chemical treatment. Or, you know, it's not something we feel like we can just ignore it. Like I say, some invasive species, really, there is no effective control. Or, you know, they're just like filling the same niche as some other native species. They don't seem to be doing a whole lot of harm and so you might ignore them. Longer term, though, the other reason to come before you folks, I think, and I'll be at the meeting of Lillinaw Clean Water to talk about this further, we need to figure out how to quit transporting these things around. It's costing money already. It's going to cost more money. This is maybe one of the worst invasives out there, but there are other ones that are just about as bad. You know, the other problem, huge problem we had was when zebra mussels came into the lake. Now, 20 years later, we have this. John, you have any?
Thank you for your time. All we're looking for is a letter of support. I think it's further on down on the agenda. And that helps when we're going to go apply for grants and stuff. So we just like approval of that letter. There's no skin right now out of anything, but this is a county issue.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So then that brings us to approval of board minutes. Commissioner Russell.
Move to approve the regular session minutes of Tuesday, July 16, 2019.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Lotner.
I would move to approve the special session minutes of Thursday, August 1, 2019.
Board.
All those in favor? Go ahead.
I believe I have a correction on page 17. Third paragraph, third sentence, I believe it's supposed to say the Great Lakes Boat.
Oh, instead of board?
Correct.
Is that okay with the motion?
Yes.
And then second?
Yes.
Okay, all those approved with the change? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Mr. Lotner.
I would move to approve executive board session minutes of Tuesday, August 13, 2019.
Board.
Mr. Rushton.
I would like to make a correction on page eight. Just a repetitive statement on the minutes. Motion by Rattenbach, motion by Rattenbach. Eliminate the redundancy.
All right. All those in favor with the change?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Commissioner Wessel.
Move to approve the regular session minutes of Tuesday, August 20, 2019.
Board.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Do you want to wait on numbers?
I would like to wait on the last week's meeting if we didn't have time to review it.
No, that sounds good. So we'll move on then and we have, we're going to look at approval of our agenda. And Mr. Ansorgi, did you have something to say about our agenda?
Yes, on item nine C, the Traverse City Ironman triathlon discussion, I'd like to move that to next month's meetings. We're just not prepared. We don't have our attorney stuff completed and there's other things happening, so I'd like to wait a month. It's not, nothing that's time critical here. So I would like to remove that item and move to next month.
Commissioner Lotner.
I have no objections to that, but I have a question about the agenda as well.
Okay.
So good for you.
Go ahead.
Okay. I am wondering, if you look at our minutes from executive, page nine, we had a motion. We did, we did have action on the 2% grant allocations meeting. Should that be on our agenda since we did pass the motion in executive?
I thought you just asked Commissioner to get with Grand Traverse County people to try something meeting.
Okay, well, we did do it by motion.
Okay.
So do you want to add that to?
I think maybe it would have a little bit more teeth if we do-
All right, you want to do it where C was?
Yes, that'd be fine. And then-
And we do have late additions here.
I would like to request that we wait on late additions one and two because they're lengthy and I, we haven't had a chance to read them yet. Is there any time, since this is an action meeting tonight, I would just as soon wait till next month if we can.
I mean, I did receive those in email and did go through them.
I haven't been all the way through them yet personally, so I would just as soon wait if there's no hurry on them or especially on, I guess I would just as soon wait on both of them if it's in light of today's budget meetings. Is that necessary that we vote on them tonight?
I don't, you know, that will be up to the board here if we really want to include it or not.
Would this delay the court anyway?
Post a position.
Yes. Go ahead.
We need to post the job for probate register because we need to hire someone. And until we have the jobs finalized, we totally probate, I don't want to put it out as being something that's potentially not going to be. So I feel a real time constraint. We want to put the ads in paper starting this week and start moving on it. I would ask respectfully that-
So I would say that we should add it to the agenda.
Both or one?
Well, there's only, the one is that's going to be posted, so I'm not sure which one that is. I didn't look.
So that's late agenda number two? Can we wait on late agenda?
We could do number one and then she could post it, right? And that for the-
Why would we not do both?
Okay, well, then that's, we'll vote on adding those two and late addition three. And I would like to do those, the late additions one and two as A and B in the beginning and late addition three would be D as part of number nine. That be all right? So we'd have an A would be late addition one. B would be late addition two. C would be the, nine C would be the, what was it? I didn't really sound-
The White House.
What? Yes, and that the White House, no, no, it's the 2% funding.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Became C for 2%, right?
2% funding.
Yep.
Yep, I missed that one.
So then-
Yeah, and then D would be about the White House.
Okay. Travel.
Yes.
I know that Commissioner Ansorgi has taken off the Ironman discussion. I hate to just put that out for a month because I think there are some things that could happen.
We were going to give an update here.
Okay.
We can give an update.
Thank you. Thank you. So we're just delaying the, an action item.
I think once you vote, if you like, I can give you a brief update if Commissioner Ansorgi can add on to it.
Thank you.
We have a lot of people in the audience who probably hear that reason.
So we do have an agenda, but we have to be, someone has to make a motion and, yes, Commissioner-
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, are there any other questions or statements? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one. So we now have an agenda.
Would you like a brief update on Ironman?
Yes, let's have a-
Yeah, as you know, last week Commissioner Ansorgi requested that a resolution be passed on the Ironman and also requested I do research on it. And I think it's fair to say that it's not that we're opposed to Ironman, it's just that the perception was that the proper procedure was not followed for closing of the roads. So I did a lot of research. I talked to the city of Traverse City officials, I talked to county officials, I talked to road commission, asking for documents and no one could produce documents that the process was followed. Commissioner Ansorgi quoted specific law. I talked to our legal counsel. He's in the process of drafting a response, but he is in agreement with Commissioner Ansorgi that the process was not followed. And not just for Ironman, but the process in place for any time a road is closed. If it's a county road, a local unit of government has to request permission in writing to the county road commission. If it's a state road, it has to be still a local unit of government requesting permission from the Department of Transportation and the state police. It appears for whatever reason, that did not happen with Ironman. So there's a meeting tomorrow that Commissioner Ansorgi, I believe, is going to with me along with our sheriff and under sheriff. We met this afternoon and we're agreement that our goal really is to make sure the process is followed properly in 2020. So if there's agreement from everyone that the process will be followed in 2020, I believe Commissioner Ansorgi may have a different resolution or may not even have one at that point. So I think it makes sense that we wait till we get the legal opinion, but verbally, Mr. Cole told me that Commissioner Ansorgi is correct in his assessment, there is a process that has to be followed any time a road is closed. And it appear that that did not happen this time. At least no one can provide me any documents and I called everyone asking for documents for that. And therefore, we're hoping that we can resolve this for 2020. Is that a fair statement?
That's my, my understanding as well.
I don't want to speak on your behalf, but there's a lot of media requests about this, so.
I believe that there are certain reasons that the roads can be shut down in the event of emergency.
Yes.
An emergency. I think what you're saying is in this specific instance where we have a special event that these rules apply.
For any special event.
Any special event, correct.
It doesn't have to be Ironman for any special event.
Right.
If a village wants to have a musical festival, which happened in Lake Lillinaw, they went through the process.
Right.
My parents' neighbor had a party at their house going to show on part of the Little Street in Cedar. They had to go through the soul township and then they went to the road commissions. And I think what Commissioner Ansorgi was saying is the law is along and should be followed.
Any other?
My, my only concern on that is sometimes I think we overreact. The best way to handle a situation like this, I think, would be to sit down with all parties. And I was uncomfortable and continue to be uncomfortable that we would move right to the Attorney General and not pick up the phone and talk to the townships and talk to the MDOT and see if we can resolve it that way. And I hope that's where we end up.
Well, the first step in that process will be tomorrow afternoon. Any other comments? All right, then that bring us to public comment. Is there anybody who wants, please come forward. You have to come up here and would you state your name?
I'm Stella Otto. I'm a resident of Casson Township and I would like to address the impact that Ironman had on us and where we live. We happen to live on South Coleman Road, south of M72. For the duration of the day, we were not able to get in and out of our house because Elmira Road behind us was closed, 72 in front of us was closed. I shudder to think if we needed an ambulance or a fire service because right next to us is probably the next most densely populated area at Casson Township within the vicinity of Maple City and that's a 20-some house subdivision. I really would urge you folks to discourage such a major event from blocking our main artery in the future. And frankly, if Traverse City's going to see the majority economic benefit, let them experience the inconvenience. I know from talking to a lot of people in our township, our residents were not happy. I know people that missed work, that couldn't get to work, some whose businesses closed, churches that did without their congregants and their collections that day. I'm sorry, I do not support the event at all coming through our township the way it did and through our county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Please come forward.
My name is Deanna Hewitt North and I currently live at 5989 South Schumberg Road in Cedar. I've been a Lillinaw County resident for over 30 years. I'm here to let you know that I fully support the Ironman event and those events that encourage healthy activity, family, that are family-centered and support community. Like with any first-time major event, you have glitches and unforeseen problems. It is my hope that our commissioners will seek positive solutions for our residents, guests, and athletes. For example, the Cherry Rube Bike Race offers a 20, a 40, a 60, and a 90-mile course throughout the county, totally avoiding M72. Could this be an option to look at? Emergency routes need to be clearly defined. Residents that are directly impacted by race routes might benefit from a face-to-face volunteer contact that provides helpful information so they don't feel locked in. The majority of athletes that I spoke with commented not only on the beauty of a small part of our county, but all of the hundreds and hundreds of spectators cheering them on. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Any other comment?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ben LaCrosse from Lake Lillinaw. I appreciate your time tonight and I appreciate your service for our county. I certainly appreciate Commissioner's, Commissioner Wessel's comments about the resolution. The resolution caused a lot of consternation and a lot of bad publicity for not only this event, but for Lillinaw County. When we're going to start suggesting that we're going to prosecute people for actions that went on, I think that goes a little overboard and I think that's where a lot of this kind of went off the rails. I spoke to you last year in September about this event. I urged you to support it and to understand how it could be a positive impact on our community. I hope that some of you had the opportunity to go down and see the event, to talk to some of the athletes who participated and maybe ask them where they were spending their time because I think, and I know, there's a lot of businesses in this community that were significantly impacted for the positive. I know we reached a lot larger clientele of tourists than just our traditional Chicago and Detroit and Cincinnati, Ohio people. We have people coming from all over the United States and we got the chance to introduce them to our beautiful area up here. I understand that there are certainly problems and issues with the bike course. In any first-year event of this magnitude, you're going to have things like that. I understand the concern back there of people who live along the bike course, but I also want you to know, as a participant, I participated in the event, how heartwarming I was to see neighbors throughout the community come up to the end of their driveway and just enjoy the race. Outside of Empire, there was a guy who took a plastic 30-gallon drum and just banged on it and cheered on people. And so many people that I talked to or saw online said, "That guy was really cool." You know, that's the flavor of Lillinaw County that people took away from this event. And were there issues with the bike course? Yes. If we changed the bike course, will there be a lot more issues? Yes, there will be a lot of unforeseen issues that we don't know about. We know what happened with this bike course this year and given one more year of proper planning and preparation, we'll be able to do it a lot better and everybody. And I look forward to your leadership in helping create a community of, an atmosphere of working together to make sure that this event goes off very successfully in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Andy Bellinger. I live in Cedar. I've raced Ironmans for, going on five, six years now, triathlons right around that same time throughout the entire country. I want to portray my love of this event here. This was the most well-supported event I've ever raced in. On the bike course, I haven't seen that many people out there cheering, cowbells, just having a really good time, holding up signs- having a really good time, holding up signs. And these weren't people that were racing, they were people, homeowners, that are on the course. That was awesome. It was beyond what I expected. So the support, I think, is there. The other thing I really wanted to go over for my Ironman is there was 1,300 volunteers. These are people out there just to help. They weren't racing. These are people from the community. They had maybe had nobody racing, just wanted to get out there and help and see what was going on. There was 80 brand-new bikes that was donated back to the community, help needy kids that didn't have bikes. $5,000 went back to Norté. Yes, Norté is not just Traverse City, they reach out to our county as well. There was $40,000 back into first responder equipment, $25,000 back into local volunteer groups. That stuff wouldn't have happened if we didn't have this event here. What I'm here to ask is instead of going right to the Attorney General, let's sit down, like Mr. Wessel said, let's sit down and find an agreement and let's just not get an agreement, let's build this. Let's make it one of the premier race destinations in the country. I sell beer for a living. I know for a fact it impacted the county. There was dollars, amounts of beer that came through. I know it's beer, people sometimes shy away from beer, but beer and wine, it helped out. It impacted the weekend, there's no doubt. Not only that, we also remember all the people that come in months in advance to train on the course, to go bike the course, go run the course and go swim in our water. There's, that's often overseen because it's not on race day. You get the people that are going, I talked to numerous amount of people during the race, "Well, we're coming back here to vacation." Why? Because they've never been here and they see what we live in a paradise. Yes, there's some inconvenience on one day and part of the morning, yes, I get that and I totally understand there are some glitches. Let's work with them and build on what we have. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other, please come forward.
Commissioners, good evening. Good evening. My name is Chuck Steinmetz. I'm an Empire, or Elwood, Leland County resident. I also participated in the race. And just like Andy behind me, I have raced all over the country and in other parts of the world, actually. I can tell you that the support that I saw out on the bike course, which is what we're here going to talk to you about, was as good as I've seen any place that I've raced before. I personally, every time I saw some residents sitting at the end of their driveway, I thanked them for the use of their roads on race day. And I thank the commissioners for letting us use the roads on race day. This is a new event. There are changes that are going to be made, improvements that are going to be made. I can tell you that I had visitors from out of state come in and stay with me. That added to the income of Leland County. We went to Sutton's Bay, we went out to Empire before the race. So we had a chance to, I got a chance to show my visitors this beautiful community in which we live in. I urge you to take a real interesting look at the bike course. Take a look at what we need to do to make this race and the bike course better for next year. Thank you for your time and appreciate your efforts. And maybe I'll see you again at another commissioners' meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David King. I'm an Elwood Township resident. And like my fellow competitors, I also raced in the August event. I don't want to repeat a lot of what they said because I think, they said exactly what I was going to say on the bike course aspect of it. It was a phenomenal event from a participant's standpoint. And seeing county residents out there cheering us along was nothing that I've seen before on a race event of this magnitude. And, but what I want to focus on a little bit is I, I'm a process guy. I appreciate following process and I appreciate that you all want to make sure the process is followed. And so I fully support that. What I'd like to do is see, and maybe this is working with TC Tourism or somebody else, but seems to me pertinent to consider and get the actual numbers about what the financial impact of was to the county specifically of the event. Anecdotally, I know we shared some stories that, you know, there were individuals who rented houses and stayed here for a week, who patronized restaurants in Leland County alone and not Traverse City. And I'm wondering if you can quantify that. I know when we registered for the race and signed up and went down and received our information, they were asking us for that information. Where did we stay? How much did we spend? And I hope that information can be delivered here. Anecdotally, I can tell you that I spent the majority of my time and nearly all of my money training for this event as a Leland County resident here in Leland County, including spending, having Sutton's Bay Bikes, a local bike company here in Sutton's Bay, build my own bike for me to use at the event. So my money went into this event and it stayed here in Leland County. I'm not sure monetarily it's quantifiable. I can tell you that events like this showcase what our county has to offer and also serves to inspire county residents. Physical task of training and competing for an Ironman event or in any other events of this duration, I think, is the easiest part. It's really the mental part that's hard. And for that, you need patience, you need determination, you need time management skills. And I think above all, you need the loving support of family, friends, and community. Those traits contributed to my success at the event, having finished it where I wanted to finish. But there are also traits that I think can inspire my young daughters who are racing here and other people in the community to, you know, pass on and hope to aspire to. Lastly, Andy mentioned the volunteers that were on the course and I want to echo that. I saw many county residents who are my friends and neighbors in the county before, during, and after the race and helped to make it a successful event. Volunteerism is something I embrace and in my view, it's not encouraged or celebrated enough. And it really warmed my heart to see many county residents out there supporting the event and embracing it so positively, notwithstanding the significant impact that the bike course had on the day and transportation issues. With that, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Any other comment? Seeing none, we'll move on with the- Just had one line here to read that was asked to be read during public comment. It says, "Hello, Mr. Anzorgi and other county commissioners. I read with interest the article in Leland Enterprise from September 12, 2019 regarding the AG probe into Ironman." I'm sorry, this is from Priscilla Bachman. "I urge you and the other commissioners strongly to move forward with the probe into Ironman and not back down. My husband and I were very upset with the entire event. Timing of the event, it was on a Sunday instead of Saturday. Wouldn't more of the stores have been open on a Saturday? How did the people from West Side Community Church even get to church that day? Or did they cancel services? They were notified on Wednesday prior to the event that there may be delays. How did other people get to church that needed to go north or south of the event? It took us an hour to reach our church in Sutton's Bay, which usually takes 20 minutes, with delays in traffic flow. As I mentioned, it took us an hour to proceed from east on Cedar Run Road to finally Gray Road, which was open. Church Road and Tilton Road had ongoing construction and Goodrich Road and the other roads leading north to M-72 were closed. Did the Ironman Committee even think to look at ongoing construction in the areas? After church, we needed to proceed through all the traffic again and made the mistake of trying to get to Acme to travel four to five hours south for my cousin's funeral. We were then caught up in the downtown mayhem of clogged traffic. State Street was inching along into the neighborhoods. We turned right onto Washington Street, I believe, and found out that there was only one-way traffic all around the surrounding neighborhood. Cars had parked on both sides of the residential streets, which ended up turning the streets into one ways. So really, you do, you would just be going around in circles through this area. The signposts on the other closed streets in this area mentioned they were to be closed until 7:00 PM. Safety of the law enforcement officers, both at Gray Road, M-72, and Cedar Run Road. Officers were forced to stand in traffic and signal a few cars at a time going north and south across 72. Officers in the downtown neighborhood areas were also affected as they were trying to move traffic while checking four directions. And again, because of the parking of the cars and other vehicles, the streets were all one-way. The amount of manpower and extra law enforcement and first responders which had to be on duty for this event was unbelievable. The state police, the city police, the sheriff's office, the EMTs, the fire department, and others whom I may have missed, all did a phenomenal job and I certainly hope and pray that they all received extra duty pay from the Ironman Committee. A few more questions. Did the revenue from the event actually go back to the people of the community? Or did it just go to the coffers of the event? Did the event organizers pay for the extra law enforcement overtime? As mentioned in the Leland Enterprise, will the county emergency management team be compensated for the extra 11 hours of overtime from the Ironman Committee? In addition to this event, I firmly believe that bicyclists should be required or there needs to be a new law to pay road taxes, use taxes, or upkeep taxes for the roads and for the tart trail and other trails, where it would be safer for them to ride. They should also be required to have a license for their bike and any device which is connected to that bike. This would be very helpful to the law enforcement if a bike was ever stolen and would help with vehicle registration fees. I certainly hope that the event is rerouted to an area which is not highly populated and/or that it moves to another city. Unfortunately, it is getting to the point, the point of, when is enough enough? As far as events, festivals, bike races, marathons, et cetera, et cetera, in our area. We are feeling that we can't enjoy our beautiful surroundings without thousands of other people here and usually we have to wait to enjoy it after they have left. Thank you for your time and consideration in reading my thoughts. Priscilla Elbachman, Traverse City. Was there any other comments besides that? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll move on with our agenda. And that would bring us to, the first one would be late edition item number one.
Marian Kropkowski, Judge of Probate Court and also Family Court here in Leland County. I know there are a lot of red arrows and delete and add marks on this document, but in a nutshell, Probate Court has a set of distinct responsibilities and the Family Division, which I'm also a judge for, has its own distinct responsibilities. These two requests are really only taking the words adoption and child protective proceedings and family court, those three or four words, out of the probate register job description and adding them to the juvenile register job description. Currently, a juvenile register job handles juvenile delinquency. Adoption, child protective proceedings, and juvenile delinquency are all Family Division matters and probate is distinct. So to make a clean break and a clean definition of responsibilities, I'm asking for permission to do that. It's my experience with other probate courts that the probate register does not handle child abuse and neglect or adoption. That is in the Family Division. That's clearly the way it is in Grand Traverse County and other counties that I'm familiar with. It isn't going to change the amount of work that's done in our office, but it is going to be a more clean definition of each of the haves of the office, Family Division, Probate. So I'm happy to answer questions. And Josephine Linker will not, I hope she's there with us a long, long time. She's our current juvenile register and we've already tried to transition in this way and she is fine with taking over the child protective proceedings. We've started to do some cross-training to get her up to speed. So that's what I'm asking for.
Commissioner Wessel.
I move to approve the revisions to the juvenile register job description as presented.
Second.
Did you want to speak to this at all? No. Commissioner Rattenbach.
I thought we were dealing with late edition number one, which was the probate job register, but I thought you said juvenile register.
My error. I will amend my motion.
I think one is the probate register.
Yeah. Right.
Okay. I'll second. Does it already?
Yeah. And she already said she approved the change.
So we are-
We are doing number one on the probate register job description.
Juvenile register.
No, juvenile is not number one.
I have this question. My number one says, "Motion to approve a revision to probate register job description as presented."
Okay, the job description-
I said they were staple.
They were stapled, correct.
The job descriptions are reversed.
Yes.
I wasn't the stapler. I won't mention names, but I did not staple these.
All right, so Marian, are you looking for a juvenile register job or the probate register job?
Well, the probate register, I'm asking to take out the word adoption, child protective proceedings, and the word family court. Take it out of that description.
Any other questions? We do know we're voting on the probate register at this time, which is under number two. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Roll call vote. Any outward question, roll call vote.
Yes, all right.
Okay, so we are voting on action item number one, the probate register job description. Correct. And that motion was made by Commissioner Wessel. Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Anzorgi?
Yes.
Chairman Bonick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lotner?
No.
Commissioner Rattenbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton?
No.
Commissioner Sudis Little?
Yes.
Five to two.
And I would like to speak to my vote, if I may, for one minute. During this confusion between the shuffling of this paperwork, I apologize, Judge, but I didn't really get a chance to review this as well as I would have liked to because I, at that point, had become confused. So my vote was no.
The motion passes five to two. Any other comments? Then we'll do late edition number two.
Which will be juvenile register, is that correct? Is adding the words we took out of probate and putting them into the Family Division juvenile register job?
Okay.
So let's look down here a second, can we?
Yes. Commissioner Wessel.
I move to approve the revisions to the juvenile register job description as presented.
Second.
And that description will be found on the back of edition number one.
Got you.
Addendum number one. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one. Thank you very much. Okay, then that will bring us to the sheriff, the AED devices. Commissioner Wessel.
I move to approve the purchase of automatic external utilities by the Leland County Sheriff's Office Courthouse Road Patrol Vehicles from Zoll in an amount not to exceed $35,700 this year or $21,000 over the next three years. Money to come from general fund contingency ending in at 010.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. So that brings us to the emergency management. Commissioner Sudis Little.
I move to approve the Board of Commissioners to allow the chairman of the Board to sign the FY 2019 EMPG work agreement and other documents related to this grant agreement and to allow the Office of Emergency Management to submit electronic signatures for the required quarterly reports.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to information technology and approval of Dell workstations. Commissioner Lotner?
I would move to approve purchase of Dell workstations. Oh, it's right here. Thank you. Need a little more than that, thank you. I would move to request to waive the bid policy on bid requirements and purchase 22 new Dell workstations at a cost of $38,593.72 with funds to come from data processing fund number six thirty-six.
Any questions for Ron?
One quick question if I may. Were any of these Dell workstations supposed to be for any of the townships at all?
No, no, just the county.
Okay. And is there any delay with getting, helping get townships there, computers or...
We really don't have a process for buying computers for the townships and reselling them to them. They have the same, they can utilize the same bid process or basically it's called the Midwestern Higher Education Compact to purchase their own through Dell directly.
Directly and not through yourself?
No, directly.
Capiers or printers, any of that also?
No.
Thank you.
And why is it we don't go out for bids?
Well, this is, I brought some literature for you all. Through Dell, they have agreed, they went out for bids, I think it was in 2014, with all the different companies and had worked out their best quote possibility. We've done it before, but everybody's coming in higher than Dell. It's hard to buy from somebody who's, from a middleman when they're going directly to source. They offer 14% discount off the price that other people can get the computers for. So we did have one company last year, for instance, that said, oh, I know I can beat Dell's pricing. So I said, okay, go ahead and bid them. I gave them the quote, gave them the specs on it. Dell quoted $36,881, his was $41,894. So he was $5,000 higher in the same clip. So, I mean, it's a contract that the government, I guess they, I'm not quite sure how they go about it, but it's in the Michigan Legislature, approved contract.
Got to be a sure volume perhaps?
Probably, yeah.
If you go through that service, then we did fulfill our bid obligations because that is a statewide service that they guarantee will always bid. Sheriff's card, we don't go out for bids, we go through that state purchasing service and there's several different ones that do that. So if Ron, if you did that, then actually did fulfill our bid compliance.
It's actually the Midwest, it's not just Michigan, so Michigan's part of the Midwest in sort of.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. So that brings us to the equalization, the four oh two nine. Four oh two nine.
I assume Mrs. Spencer's gonna be there, but I don't see her.
Yeah. Can we try and...
My understanding, this is a pretty standard thing that we do every year, so I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion to approve a mileage rate that does not exceed the maximum allowed mileage levy of column nine and place that mileage rate in column 10 as the mileage rate requested to be levied December 1st and return L dash four zero two nine to the equalization defer.
Second.
All those in favor? Question?
Is it necessary to approve this at this time?
Clerk?
It is.
I'm pretty sure it has to do with the timing, she has to have it ahead of, at this time.
I was hoping that we'd...
I'm in remembrance, sure why she's not here.
And then, if I'm right, I think we have to approve it by this date, but then it can be amended after elections in the fall.
Right, if it changes, if like the mileage goes through, then it will change. Any other questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. So that brings us to planning. Commissioner Lotner.
I would move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the MMRMA wrap grant to be submitted for a workshop on master plans.
Board. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. So then we have a request for a letter of support. Commissioner Lotner.
I would move to approve a letter dated September 18th, 2019, from William Bunnick, Chairman of the Leland County Board of Commissioners, in support of the eradication of Eurasian milk oil.
Second.
All those in, oh, go ahead.
Quick question. I guess it speaks for itself because it's a letter, but should it, was it just for Lake Leland?
Yes.
So in the, Lake Leland, okay. The letter will save that, correct?
Yeah, the sample was...
I think it says specifically Lake Leland, okay.
And I think it has the Lake Leland Association in it as well.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. So that brings us to senior services. Commissioner Sudis Little.
I moved to the County Board of Commissioners to allow Leland County Senior Services, LCSS, to waive the board policy on bid requirements and work with Leland County Administrator to review and negotiate Leland County Senior Services service contracts as presented. To begin January 1st, 2020.
And if we're successful, those will come back to the board for approval.
Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. So that brings us to county clerk, clerk and the board canvassers. Do we have to have a vote again?
I believe we do. Oh, a ballot vote?
Yeah.
I would move that John Harbottle and Eric Lynn be appointed to the Leland County Board of Canvases, each to a four-year term, November 1, 2019 through October 31, 2023.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. So that brings us to the LEC roof project and the fund transfer.
I would move to approve the increase in cost for the Leland County law enforcement center roof replacement in an amount not to exceed $5,115 with funding from the Capital Project Fund number four seven zero regarding the two issues described in the Century A&amp;E correspondence of August 26th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Here's some positive news. Their target completion date was October 1st. I believe they're done. We're having a contractors meeting Friday morning.
Great.
I bet they're happy about that too.
Yeah.
Just in time for winter.
Just in time to start another job.
Well, it's because they basically are working seven days a week on this project. As a clerk can verify and I can verify, they were here on weekends working.
We really have had pretty good weather.
Yeah, that really, that really helped.
Yeah, that did.
Yes. Commissioner Wessel.
I move to approve the resolution to recognize the first day of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, Leland County Resolution Number 219 dot X X X.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ann Sorgi?
Yes.
Chairman Bonnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lotner?
Yes.
Commissioner Rattenbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sudis Little?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you. So that'll bring us then to the 2% funding. Commissioner Lotner, did you want to...
Sure. I would move that we approve the Chairman of the County Administrator and Commissioner Rushton that they open a dialogue with Grand Travers County regarding proper procedures associated with the 2% grant allocations. And, we did, excuse me, did we intend that that be with the tribe also?
Well, the first was to have a dialogue with Grand Travers County.
Okay, okay. And that stands.
Yes. Yes.
I was second.
Oh, okay. So then now it's open to discussion. Is there anything you want to say? I mean, we, I can address it if you want.
Have you met?
No, but we, next Tuesday, we have the Airport Commission on Airport Authority meeting and I actually sent an email to Chet that he contacted Nate Helger at that time, you know, maybe we can meet after it or before it or something because we're already there together and see if, you know, that, and we can set up how we would want to address it. I don't know, did you have a different idea?
No, 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 that's exactly what we talked about last week.
Yeah. And that's what I thought, I thought it was just going to be an informal discussion at that meeting to try to get together with them. And that's what we talked about last, last week at our, at our executive meeting.
Then they'd have a formal meeting, formal meeting after that if they're in agreement because we don't know if they are or not.
Right.
Before we vote, could she restate the motion? I didn't hear it though.
My motion was to have the Leland County Board of Commissioners, Board Chairman, County Administrator, and Commissioner Rushton have an open dialogue with Grand Travers County regarding proper procedures associated with the 2% grant allocation.
Go ahead.
I'm hoping that we'll have a paper trail for ourselves to kind of follow this process and hopefully it can be a real positive outcome ultimately that if, if together with Grand Travers County, we have an idea of what we want to do as far as the 2% grant allocations go and then of course ultimately meet with the tribe and see if we can't form some sort of a, our own compact or agreement of some kind on how those 2% requests can be done.
Were there any other comments?
I think that discussion should be a little bit broader than that scope. One, the terms of the original compact have not been followed. So I think that during the course of the conversation with Grand Travers County, I think we should kind of air all of that and see what direction the two counties might want to pursue. I don't want to preempt the meeting with a, you know, making a steadfast decision on what we will or will not accept. Does that make any sense?
Commissioner Wessel.
And I support in favor of the conversation. I would like not to have decisions made to be brought back to this board to be ratified. I think that's an initial discussion, but not a final discussion.
We're gonna see if they even want to talk.
I don't know, another committee has made decisions and brought it to this board and finalized it just recently.
Well, that's true.
I'm just saying, they set a precedence.
Well, it's...
But I agree with you, I do, I agree with you, but I mean, there was a precedent set that was, I think, way out of line myself, you know.
My thought was, and it, I left it vague deliberately because I think those conversations, they're going to take a life of their own and ultimately I hope we get somewhere, but they've got to start somewhere. That's where I wanted to start.
And myself, I like this idea because I mean, I don't really want us to disagree all the time about that and I, and so if we can get this settled, hopefully we can all follow the same rules, you know? And that's really, I think, I'm just, sorry, I didn't think of this sooner, you know, it really, it was the enterprise that is really, I think, instigated and encouraged this.
The enterprise or a certain person on the enterprise?
Well, okay.
Possibly.
So, all right, so all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Then that brings us then to the White House.
Yeah, and this is my request. Commissioner Bunnick really did not recommend this. I called him and asked him. I read the MAC newsletter and then I read the NACCO newsletter and I know Commissioner Rushton went two years ago and had a very positive experience report back to the board and so therefore I called Commissioner Bunnick and highly recommend that he consider doing this to represent the county. I think it's a great honor, space is limited, it's not very often to get a chance to meet at the White House and talk to people at the national level like this, so I think it's a great investment. As you can see, the cost is fairly minimal, we have it in our budget and I think it's a great opportunity for Leland County but also for Commissioner Bunnick.
Commissioner Ritten.
I move to approve the out-of-state travel for Chairman William J. Bunnick to Washington, DC to attend a White House summit in October, funds to come from Fund eight six zero, ending in eight six zero.
Board.
If you wear the same suit, the United States.
Is there amendment to the motion or?
No. It was an analytical comment following the motion.
All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. All right, so then that brings us then to the review of financials.
Day of update, you received an email late this afternoon from Mr. Cole about the sheriff's purchase that I know you haven't seen it yet. I haven't really read it, I just saw that it came in, so read that because that's linked to our financial discussion.
Commissioner Wessel.
I'm going to look to staff to tell us what our options are here to get out of this hole, so.
Well, I...
You know, I did have a chance between meetings.
I briefly glanced at it, but appears that Mr. Cole is in agreement with the clerk and therefore it's up to the person who made the purchase to pay for those purchases.
I just want to know what the options are.
I will speak on behalf of clerk, was that accurate?
It's accurate.
Thank you.
I believe in that letter, they had suggested that you ask for an opinion from Lansing. Did we do that?
No, he said if we, that's his opinion, if you wish to pursue it further or the sheriff wishes to pursue it further.
You getting it in writing?
Through the Department of Treasury. But on that letter, once again, it seems to be the opinion of the auditor and our legal counsel that it was not a proper purchase. And normally we rely on our expertise to make those decisions for us.
But I guess the point that I was making is that he would have that option.
Yeah, of course, yes, yes.
Well, I, you know, I think we could just ask the sheriff to be able to allow those for the public, not to be special tokens for special people. And if they're open to the public, if you can put them on a desk, if somebody wants them, they have them, then, then they could, you know, then I do believe it would be legal. The fact that he's using them for only certain people, that's where it becomes, you know, illegal or wrong or whatever the opinion says. So I think that would be, my advice is that this board asks him to just make them available to the public.
Do you need the motion for that?
I would, I don't know if we can tell him what to do, but I'm just, you know, I would just say, you know, as a consensus, I don't know if we can even do that, but I mean, that's...
Someone has to get in the door.
So I guess, I don't know how that would go about.
If we were to do that, I'd want to go back to the same legal authority and the auditor and ask if that would solve the problem. I don't want to assume that it would.
Okay. I mean, if he's willing to do it, I mean, that's, you know.
Well, that's why I say we leave it to the clerk and the sheriff to decide the next step, sorry.
That was a great, that was a great lesson for us all, wasn't it?
Well, the sheriff does have a bill, if he wishes to appeal to the State Treasury.
Right.
Do we send perhaps this a letter explaining...
Um, do we send perhaps this a letter explaining to him where we sit as Board of Commissioners for our, our, our due diligence and what our board policy is on it? And explain to him why we cannot pay this bill?
I can tell you, we had a lengthy meeting with two commissioners we were at explaining our policies for purchasing acquisitions, purchase or use of paratres and so forth. We had those, we actually had numerous meetings with that. Some were private between the clerk and the sheriff and myself, some were with other staff people, some involved commissioners, but that has to be in place.
So then, um, we, maybe along the same line, per, per conversations or per board policy that, you know, Board of Commissioners chooses not to cover this for policy perhaps, or something along that line. I, I mean, it isn't just our board rules, I, I believe we've got IRS or IRS.
Well, you have the attorney and you have our auditors basically having the same agreement.
Right, so, you know, per that, send him an invoice for it maybe and go from there. Because he, and he does have an option, I think, if it, to not use the tokens for what its first intent was.
I'm certainly wanting to talk to him and see.
Okay.
If he resolves.
He chooses to say, okay, I understand, and just give them away.
But based on his memo and his public comments, this is what the clerk had to go by.
Exactly.
Commissioner Soderstol.
And I see that Sheriff Borkevich is copied.
Yes.
On this, from, from Peter Cole. So I'm sure he has his own opinions as to what he would like to do and how we would like to proceed.
I will follow up with him. It puts the clerk in an awkward position, somebody that.
It puts accounting in an awkward position, how about that?
Okay, any other reviews of financials?
I do not have any.
All right. So then that brings us to staff special report, no, committee reports. About special reports. Public comment. If you have any comments, please come forward.
Hi, my name's Warren and I live in Solomon Township. And first off, thanks, anybody who's do this all the time, I can't believe it. We have a public forum here all the time, that's great. Commissioner Bunnick, Administrator Yan, appreciate all your work. I kind of wanted to hold off because everybody was so, you know, they were pretty emotional earlier about the, the whole bicycle race. I was impacted for quite a while. Forty-five minutes took me to figure out a way to get across 72 from the north to the south. About 15 minutes driving around and being told I could drive 22 minutes to Empire to turn around and unpack. So I was impacted, but what I'm really most happy about is that I have an opinion to work it out, figure it out. You guys are gonna meet with the parties that are out there and try and make it approved because we've got a good county and we've got a lot of good things going on. My question is, I wondered what they, how they might work, a lot of people talked about the volunteers. And I wondered if the volunteers could help the process rather than just putting them on, you know, like, could we have rolling gaps? Just, I just encourage everybody to kind of listen up and make improvements. Again, I, I thank you all for your steadfast work here all the time. We owe our, our government, you know, I owe my thanks to everyone of you to helping our county for all the different things we face all the time, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move then Commissioner comments. Yes, Commissioner Wester.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I had a conversation with Mr. Bunnick this week and, and I think we work well together most of the time. And I, I want to say that, but I sometimes struggle with how we do business together. And I'd like to indulge me to read two paragraphs from a recent book. It's written by a very conservative Washington Post columnist, Arthur Brooks. And he chairs the, or did chair until he just retired, the American Enterprise Institute. So he, he's well respected in this field. And he's written a book about how we ought to get along. And I, I found this paragraph that I'd like to read and I'd like us to think about that. And I, please let me, let me do this and, and you can cuss at me later. None of us is infallible. Whether you are a person of the left, the right, or the center, there are reasonable people of goodwill who do not share your fundamental convictions. All of us should be willing, even eager, to engage with anyone who is prepared to do business in the currency of truth-seeking discourse by offering reasons, marshalling evidence, and making arguments. The more important the subject under discussion, the more willing we should be to listen and engage, especially if the person with whom we are in conversation will challenge our deeply held, even our most cherished and identifying, identity-forming beliefs. Our willingness to listen to and respectfully engage those with whom we disagree contributes vitally to the maintenance of an environment in which people feel free to speak their minds, consider unpopular positions, and explore lines of argument that may undercut established ways of thinking. Such an ethos protects us against dogmatism and groupthink, both of which are toxic to the health of academic communities and the functioning of democracies. And I read this because I think we all need to sometimes listen better, talk less, and be willing to debate and dialogue. And sometimes we do that well, and sometimes, and I'm speaking to our presentation that we had last week, I think when Mr. Bruce sat down there, we had our opinion of what he was going to say before he even started to speak. And I like this and, and I, I, I will, I will not take offense if you read to me out of your book next week.
I'm sorry, Mr. Who spoke last week?
Skip Bruce on the, on the document on the environment, water, government role in water quality.
Oh, oh, the flow, mhm, okay.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comment? Seeing none, then we move to approval of financials. Commissioner Laugner.
I would move to approve claims and accounts $277,944.06.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
I would move to approve post-audit $4,964,012.54.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes seven zero. We are adjourned.